Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody who's with us in person this evening, viewing online, maybe not quite yet, at least listening online, to the regular session, January 17, 2024, of the Kansas City Board of Public Utilities Board of Directors meeting. I'd like to remind everybody that this entire meeting is being recorded via audio and video. And please be mindful, this is a public meeting. The agenda this evening reflects a couple of things. One of which is we've got, we have a new format for public comments. So, and we've changed up the rules according to the board policies that were adopted last month, or yeah, month of December, I believe. And so there's a visitor comment section that will come up as it has in the past. And visitors are welcome to come up and address the board and have a total of three minutes to speak, which is a deviation from the prior method we use, and we used to have a five-minute time period. We've cut that back to three because we now have another section later in the, in the meeting. And the other section in the meeting is called a public comment section. And that actually will also, three minutes per comment. And that will occur after the general manager and staff reports to address specifically the agenda items. So the first visitor section is to address the board traditionally as visitors have done in the past. And the second section, the public comment section, is specifically if members would like to, members of the public would like to address the specific agenda items that in tonight's agenda appear in Section 8, Romanets 1 through 4. So just wanted to make that clarification. If you are in the room with us this evening and you would like to speak this evening in the visitor section, I would ask that you please sign up over here at the executive assistance desk. If you're on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature that's at the bottom of the app. Each member that wishes to speak, we've gone through this, you guys know what your timeframe is, or your time limit is, which is three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Please also direct your comments to the board only. A reminder that all comments here are public. And so we caution anybody who's speaking not to disclose confidential account information that you may have, nor disclose account information about an account that is not in your name. Staff can step outside and perhaps help you with an individual issue, but they are not able to assist you with individual account information during the open meeting for the same confidentiality reasons. As always, members of the public may email or call BPU with questions or concerns. Tonight's agenda and presentations can be found on your screen. If you're viewing with us online, they'll be here on the screen in the room. Reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Directors, and we will conduct the meeting accordingly. The following rules apply to tonight's meeting. Every person in this room, every attendee online, will act respectfully toward one another. Personal attacks and accusations toward any person will not be tolerated. And we'd ask that you would please state your specific issue or question to the board only. And attendees, we'd ask that you refrain from side discussions or individual commentary that interferes with speakers or other attendees at this meeting. If you have a side discussion that's necessary, we ask that you please just step outside the boardroom and have that discussion. If, if any of the above rules are breached, the person breaching those rules is subject to removal from the boardroom, the board's discretion. My name is Rose Mulvaney Henry. I'm the member-at-large, position 3, and I'm the current board president. Other members of BPU's board and staff include Mr. Bill Johnson, the general manager, Senator David Haley, member-at-large, position 2, Mr. Tom Groneman, 2nd district, and the current board vice president, Stevie Wakes, Senior, 1st district, Brett Parker, 3rd district, Mary Gonzalez, member-at-large, position 1, and Angela Lawson, our acting chief counsel. Would remind everyone to please put your phones on silent. And also remind you that there are microphones throughout the room. They can pick up and record comments from anywhere in the room. So please be mindful of that. And before we begin our meeting, I would ask that you rise and join me in reciting our pledge of allegiance. Before I entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda, I'll ask if there are any corrections that need to be made? Oh, I'm sorry, I need to call roll, my bad, sorry, Angie. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Groneman.
Here.
Haley.
President.
Wakes.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Now then, before I entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda, I'll ask if there are any corrections that need to be made? Hearing none?
I move to approve the agenda for this evening.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Before I entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the special session of December 2023, I will ask if there are any corrections that need to be made or edits? Hearing none?
So moved. Wait, second.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Before we, I asked for a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of January 3, 2024. I'll ask if there are any corrections or edits that need to be made? Hearing none?
Move to approve the minutes of the regular session of January 3.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. Chris, I'll first ask if there's anyone. All right, thank you. So there's one person signed up tonight, C.C. Mank. If you can come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, please, and you've got three minutes. It's not on, Dave.
Hello.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, my name is Tassia Mank. I'm here from Wyandotte County, I live in Wyandotte County. First, I want to say congratulations to Ms. Rose Mulvaney, and I hope that you are as diligent on this board as you are in your personal position. I just have a few questions. I wanted to know what the process is for the, I mean, for this board to accept new items onto our bill from the unified government, like this new storm charge. I want to know, like, is there a process? Is there a voting process? Are you all included? If not, I kind of want to know that. If you have a charter or anything you can direct me to, that would be great. My next question is, what is the component rate charge? And why is it, like, usually a little bit higher than the bill? And then I wanted to know if it is true that the general manager is due to retire at the end of this year with 99% of his salary? After, you know, going forward, his retirement, 99% of his salary as retirement?
Okay, I can take some of that on. Lori, I know you're coming up later. So in terms of the UG charges on the bill, BPU is required by charter ordinance to be able to add those charges and collect the fees for the unified government and and turn those payments back over to the UG based on us collecting fees from the public.
What I'm, is there, so there's no way that you can say no? You have to expect.
So we are on the presentation is, is a separation of bills that we're going to present tonight, and kind of where we are and what's the plan else going forward. But the unified government does determine what those rates are. They communicate that to us. We change our system to support those rate changes. And then we currently still billing the public for the charges that the UG asked us to bill.
Yes, sir. The component rate charge.
I'm sorry.
I've had several people contact me about the component rate charge. Like, we don't kind of understand it. You have your actual charges for your actual electric use, and then it has something called a component rate charge that fluctuates monthly. And we are not understanding what that is.
I mean, those are questions you should take back to the UG and ask them, how did they go around? Go about calculating the bills?
No, no, it's on my electric bill, component rate charge, electric component rate charge.
So that's, those are BPU charges. We've got, we've got a rider called ERC, which is the market prices for energy that we pass through to our customers. The other one is a rider called the environmental surcharge. BPU is under heavy regulation by the federal government. So in order for us to operate the utility as effectively as we feel like we need to, we have to be in full compliance with those federal guidelines. So in order to make sure that we could, we remain compliant, we have to sometimes invest in our system. I think your three minutes is up.
But I have the last question that I had asked. I just, it's a simple yes or no, because the board should have voted on it. When he does retire, is he going to receive 99% of his salary as retirement? According to his contract?
As I sit here today, I don't know what Mr. Johnson's retirement would be, or any other employee for that matter. That, that's not something that I think the board is, I don't know if the board has that information, to be, to be honest.
It was in his contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person signing up is Alicia Murphy, if you can come up. State your name, address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay, my name's Alicia Murphy. My address is 3213 Teromee. And I am really just here to make you guys all aware about Robert Mylan and his grandson and the cover-up that they're doing. And I have legal binding documents here. Like, I was tortured over a period of a week and a half. My arm was broken in several places. I have all his prior charges. He has two personal felonies or non-personal felonies, and his family wants him to get probation. This is the face of BPU. He was the president of BPU, and this is how I'm treated? Like, I, I was beaten, beaten, strangled almost to death, and they're trying to get, give him probation. This is what his family wants. They hired all this fancy lawyer to get him to go against me. I had to take the stand. And I want, I want you guys, can I approach you guys to?
To, ma'am.
That submitted to.
Ma'am, I just wanted to make you aware that this, this is a legal matter that has nothing to do with BPU? Why, why would it have anything to do with BPU?
Because Robert Mylan is the face of BPU. What do you mean? And he goes around using
This.
Grandpa's power, his grandfather's power, to get away and keep doing what he does. Do you know how many people he's been because of him? Anybody else?
Angie, I'll look to you. I don't think we can get into any type of legal matters, not
No, the BPU.
To BPU. Rick, is there anyone online? Their hands raised, wanting to speak. So we'll go ahead and close out the, the visitor comment section. And next, I'll turn it back over to the board for election of officers.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Section 11 is in the Charter Ordinance 5-01 sets out the first process for election. And it states that the board shall elect from its own number a president and vice president, and shall appoint a secretary. Now, you determined in the past that you do the appointment by the same process, because there's no other way to do it. So what normally, what normally has happened is at this point, the president will hand the gavel to the vice president, and then the vice president takes over and states that the floor is open for nominations for the office of president for the term of January 2024 to 2025. If, if there are any nominations, the vice president will ask if there's a second. And then we'll proceed to see if there are any more nominations. I would have taken it over there. And so then you go through and see if there are more nominations in seconds. Once there are no more nominations, you vote to close the nomination period, and then you vote on them in the record that, in the order that they were received and seconded.
Okay, at this time, I'll open the nominations for president.
Mr. Vice President, I nominate Tom Groneman to be the president.
My second.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations?
I move the nominations closed.
A second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the nominations cease. Let's have a roll call, please.
Roll call, Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
That motion carries.
We'll now open up nominations.
Now you have to vote on that, that was just closing. And now you have to, this is the idiot procedure.
All right, let's.
Have a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
That motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you. Now we will open nominations for vice president.
It's Mulvaney Henry, I nominate Senator Haley. We have a second?
Second.
I move that the nominee, sorry, go ahead, Tom.
Are there any other nominations for vice president? Any other nominations? No, okay.
I move that the nominations are closed.
Second. Okay, all in favor? Roll call.
Roll call, Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Now, we have a vote.
You know, you vote.
Now we do the vote. All in favor? Roll call.
Roll call, Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
That motion carries, congratulations.
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 Okay, now, for the appointment of secretary, do we have any volunteers?
I nominate, I would like to nominate Mr. Wakes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Mr. Wakes assumed the position of secretary. Are there any other nominees or any other?
I move the nominations be closed.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, the nomination cease, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
That motion carries.
So now the nominations are closed, let's have a vote. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
That motion carries, congratulations.
Okay, thank you. We now have a constituted Board of Officers, so we can continue on to the next item of business, which is a general manager and staff reports.
Thank you, Mr. President. First item on the agenda is November 2023 financials. So I'll ask Lori to come up and write an update to the board.
Okay, good evening.
Evening.
We'll go over our results for November of 2023. First, to just go over our 2023 billed KWH, January through November. This compares our electric usage in comparison to last year at this time. Our residential is down just slightly, about a half percent compared to 2022. Commercial is up about 1%, while industrial is down about 10%. Part of that reason for, on the electric side, on the industrial, this was a time period when General Motors was going through their strike period. So it lasted about a month, kind of carried over into, I think, end of October, but most of November, they were down. Next slide looks at our water usage. Residential is up about 2%. Commercial is up about 3%. Industrial is down about 4% in concert with the, what we see on the electric side. And overall, we're about 1.1% above 2022 levels. Looking at our revenues just for the month of November, we're about 9.5% below where we were in 2022. Our electric is down. Our water is up compared to 2022, and then overall, our combined is down. From a budget to actual perspective, our budget is, or actually is below our budget by about 16%. Electric is down about 19%. Water shows a slight increase of, of budget, about 1%. So overall, combined, almost 16%. Looking from a year-to-date perspective, electric, water, and combined are above 2022 levels. From a budget to actual perspective, we're above our budget by about 3%. Electric up, being up 3%, while water is up 4%. Some of the categories there, we are seeing residential up about a million and a half over budget. Commercial is about 10.6 million above budget. Industrial is about 2.1 million below. Schools are about 1.1 million, and then our wholesale sales, market sales are down about 4.5 million. On the water side, all customer classes are above budget, $1 million on the residential side, 1.1 on the commercial, about $92,000 on industrial, and then wholesale is up about $173,000. Looking at our operating expenses just for the month of November, we are showing that we are down in comparison to 2022 by about 14.5% compared to budget. Actual is down about 10%. The electric side is down about 12%, while water is up just slightly, about a half a percent. Looking from a year-to-date perspective, we're pretty much in target where we were last year. It's, it's down a little bit, about 1%. We're about 1.1% above budget through November. Electric is up 2%, while water is down about 5%. Just when you look at the graph there, always kind of take a look at fuel and purchase power. That is about 40% of our expenses. And then our electric and water operations is about 44% of our expenses. I will note, especially for the new board members, the first six months of 2023, we did recover 14 point, almost 14.8 million of an under-recovery of our energy rate component, which is our fuel and purchase power costs. So that was completed in, in June. We just recognize it throughout the year.
Excuse me, Lori? Customer account expense is only 2%, but could you help us really? What, what exactly is that line item?
So it's, it's customer service. Basically, the expenses associated with customer service. There are some in economic development that are related to the customer side, so it's mostly customer service costs.
Does that fluctuate any, or?
Not too much, very small.
It's budgeted?
Yeah.
So it's pretty much 2% on cost of board?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
This slide looks at our operating expenses from a year-to-date perspective, less depreciation. So we're about 2.2% below 2022 levels. From a budget to actual, we're, we're less than 1% below budget or above budget. Electric categories there, so our purchase power is up about 1.1 million. Our fuel is down about 9.1 million. Production down about 1.9. And then our, our transmission distribution is down about 2.5 million, while our general administrative is down about 2 million. On the water side, production, all categories on the water side are, are below budget, with production being about 1.2 million, and transmission distribution about 370,000, while general administrative is down about 390,000. This slide looks at our change in net position just for the month of November. Last year at this time, we were a negative change in net position of about 5.4 million. In 2023, for November, we budgeted to be a negative change in net position of 2.7 million, and our actual was 4.3 million. Negative. Looking from a year-to-date perspective, last year at this time, we had a positive 25.6 million budget to actual. We're at a positive 25 million on the electric side, about 10.1 million on the water side, and overall, about 35 million positive change in net position. This next slide just kind of gives us a 10-year historical look at our revenues and expenses. The blue line, blue, purple, is our revenue, while the red is our operating and non-operating expenses. And this is looking from a year-to-date perspective, January through November. When we look at '22 compared to '23, I mean, this is kind of just reiterates a couple of the top pages before, before. In '22, we had revenues about 292 million, while expenses were about 270 million. So a net positive about 16 million. For '23, we're about 2023. For twenty-three, we're about two hundred and ninety-five million, um, and expenses about two hundred and seventy million, so we're about a positive twenty-five million. This slide looks at the water. Um, revenues of around forty-nine, uh, million with expenses about thirty-nine point four for twenty twenty-two, so there's a positive nine point seven. Uh, in twenty-three, we had fifty-one point three million, uh, of revenue and forty-one point three million of expenses, so it's a positive ten million. This looks at basically our average daily collections of, um, that we're collecting on our, uh, utility bills. And for the month of November, we're at, uh, we've, we're collecting around one point six million, uh, per day. As you can see, that's kind of a drop from October and, uh, the previous month, so we're getting into our winter period where our revenues, um, aren't quite as, uh, high as during our summer period. And this is, um, from a perspective of the cash that we're collecting, it's based on September usage, um, being billed in October and the cash that we're collecting in November. Uh, this is just a historical look at, um, our monthly cash. We did show a negative, um, drop in cash of about seven point seven million. Um, previous month was about seven point two million, so it just kind of pretty much offset, um, what we had accomplished in October. Um, this is coming out of our summer period. Um, we had a capacity agreement that, that, uh, we were collecting on through the summer, and that has ended, so, um, our winter rates are in place. Also, um, our cold weather rule is in place, so our ability to, um, you know, disconnect, um, is, is less because of the cold weather that we're occurring. So this looks, next slide, is our cash position. So for November, we're at ninety-six days cash. Um, in October, we were at a hundred and seven days, so, uh, we anticipate expenses above revenue kind of going into winter, winter period. You know, we try to minimize that, um, last few months of, of the winter, um, and going into the first part of next year. And, uh, try to minimize the amount of, um, expenses because we know our cash levels are not, uh, quite as high. This next slide, this is a historical look, um, at our days cash on hand. So we are kind of at a higher peak than we have been over the last, um, three years, which is positive. We do kind of have some preliminary December numbers. We're still kind of wrapping up our year-end, um, and we do show a very small negative, which is good. Um, uh, so hopefully, we can end the year with approximately, uh, the ninety-six days of cash on hand. This slide, it just looks at a few of our balance sheet items. So fuel inventory, which is, um, you know, um, big, that's our coal on the ground, so currently the value of that coal is eleven point seven million. Last year at this time, we're about seven and a half million. Um, we do have a, a substantial amount of coal still on the ground, um, with the, the plant, um, you know, not being called on, but, uh, they, the plan is being called on and, and, um, trying to work through that and, uh, um, get down to our levels of, of coal inventory, uh, for what we project. The last two bond issues, it should be the last time you see those numbers on this page. We have drawn down that money in December finally. And so the twenty sixteen C, um, will be fully drawn down, and the twenty twenty A, uh, is fully drawn down in December, so. This slide is our capital program and our capital spending. Um, so we have an overall budget of, of about sixty point five million, uh, capital plan. Um, thirty point seven of that is electric side, twenty-four point seven is the water, and then five point two million is what we call common, which is mostly our IT. We have a little bit of administrative, um, capital in that number as well. So through November, we've spent almost forty million. Um, some of the major projects there are the Fisher underground feeders. Uh, we spent about three point three million. We have an annual and under, annual underground and overhead program. Um, we spent about two point three, one point five million respectively. Um, we're continuing to work on our distribution, pole inspection, replacement program. Uh, we've spent a million and a half. Uh, we're implementing a IT meter data management upgrade, so that's about five hundred and sixty thousand. Then on the water side, we've got system improvements, uh, valves and leaks that, uh, they've been, um, replacing. That's about two point four million. And then one of their bigger projects is the Argentine seven million gallon tank replacement, where they spent about six and a half million. Last slide, uh, looks at our debt coverage. Our debt coverage is, um, uh, ratio that we, um, have identified within our financial guidelines. Uh, we look at it, uh, with pilot, um, which that is in our financial guidelines at two-point, uh, times. So for every dollar, uh, of debt we have, we have two dollars on hand. Uh, so where we're at, at the end of November on a combined basis, uh, we have three point oh eight times. Um, last year at this time, we were about two point three five times. Uh, the, the graph below, it looks at our debt coverage without pilot, and our financial guideline for that target is one point six times. And so we're at a combined, uh, two point three five times, uh, electrics at two point two seven and waters at one point eight one. Do you have any questions?
Lori, uh, can we go back one slide, please? On the Argentine, um, tank replacement, do you know when that is projected to be complete? Thank you, Steve Green.
Aye, for you.
If someone could answer. Yeah, it's, it's been ongoing for a minute.
Yeah, so, uh, the Argentine tank, um, it's projected to be done next summer now. Um, they've pretty much shut down for the winter. Um, it's, so it, it's complete, so when they come back in the spring, we have to do our leakage test. Once they do the leakage test, um, then they'll fill it, we'll, um, uh, do all the sampling that we need to, and then we'll put it in, put it into the system. Um, after that, after we let it, I think we, it's at least a month, then they're going to go into the four million gallon and do some improvements to it because it needs some upgrades to it. And, uh, so by the end of summer, we should be completely done. The project has taken longer than originally. Um, the Kansas City area market has hit a, uh, had, had a new concrete come through, um, our area. It's kind of started, uh, in different areas, and it's finally made it to the Midwest, and we went from a type one-two concrete to a type one L. Well, uh, it was all new to all the, the concrete mixing places, so they could, we wouldn't accept their, uh, um, we wouldn't accept their batch until they did their testing, and it took them pro- probably three and a half, four months before they finally got their mixes right, where it met the expansion, um, uh, right, where the cracking and stuff, so it took a little longer than we thought, but, um, but we wanted to make sure, we didn't want to make any, uh, you know, by letting him come in, there could have been a problem if we didn't get that test, uh, done. So, but it, it should be probably in May, we'll probably have it in service, but we still have repairs to the four million, so.
So Steve, is all the concrete stuff is done and?
Yeah, it's all, it's all done. I mean, it, it's done. Now it's just they got to do a leak test, and, um, they, we didn't want them to do the leak test until the spring because they wanted to do the leak test and then just leave water in there. Well, then we were going to have to deal with that water at this setting in winter, so we, we postponed it and said, we know we're not going to do the leak test until spring, and that way it can all move forward, and, uh, we don't waste water once it's all done, and we, we, uh, we chlorinate it, and then we, uh, sample it, and when we get, it's a forty-eight hour test we take, and once that comes back, then we can put it into the system.
Thank, thank you, Steve, on that one.
Yeah.
Darren. Unl- unless Lori knows this one. I'm going to ask about the Fisher underground feeders and when that project might be complete.
Uh, it is done. So.
Why, thank you.
Okay, all the way up here for that. Yeah, we finished it up just before the end of the year.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Darren, Darren.
Yeah, sorry.
So we probably have a lot of coal on the ground right now. Probably have a lot of coal on the ground right now. Is, when we do get called on for nearmen, is that an issue? Because
Wrong guy.
Wrong person to ask. I'm sorry, your distribution.
Come on, new guy.
That's right.
Yeah. I don't know if you all have been, I know you've been, some of you have been introduced, uh, to Don Stahl. He's been with us not quite a month now, but he's the new, um, executive director of Electric Production, replacing Glenn. So I know he's met some of you, um, but just in case you're wondering who's, who's answering this, and thought it'd be wise to at least formally introduce him, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just wondering with the coal, I know in the past, it's really cold weather. We've had a lot of trouble with it freezing, and then when we get, is it ready, ready if we get called on?
It is ready. We're burning coal tonight. Um, we have, you know, we struggle a little bit with freezing coal from time to time, but it hasn't been an issue as far as this cold spell goes.
Okay, good.
So following up on that, what I, I saw that the reserves were significantly less last year in the report, but that, so what is the shelf life? Or are holding, you know, uh, the fuel, the coal?
We have coal handlers on site, and they shape the pile daily, um, you know, keeping the, keeping the coal ready. Um, you know, I don't know, and that's, I mean, it's years that it would be a shelf life on that pile. We don't anticipate it being there that long, so.
Wouldn't be disaffected by freezing temperatures over the course of a while with that change, or, or there, or?
It might be the composition a little bit, but it's not going to, we'll, we'll still be able to burn it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Thanks, Lori.
Mm-hmm.
I, I. Go ahead, I had a, I had a question, um, if, if I might. Mr. President, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So are the numbers back on the cold weather rule? I mean, there was some concern that with the implementation, the first year being last year, that there would be, um, a potential shift in, in our financials because of the new policy, which, you know, is a little more compassionate toward, um, this kind of weather. Would you say, or could you say, if there are any significant numbers that have come out of that for our bottom line or the financial bottom line because of that new policy?
I don't know that I can say, um, you know, that's, uh, information that Janata's team puts together. Um, I don't.
She's, she's not here. I would, I guess I would say it's really too early to tell at this point because we just got into the cold weather period, November first. This is a new policy. We have no history to speak of with this new policy, so, and then issue, uh, just remember the other day, we've had some below zero freezing weathers, and, uh, who knows what the rest of winter is going to be like, so, you know, this is kind of new frontier. We're going to be learning a lot, and then when the board did, uh, did pass the new policies, uh, we did agree to come back and report back later as to what the final impact deals. So moving forward, I think, uh, we'll have certainly enough data to have any conversation the board or the public may want to have on, uh, on the final impact of, uh, what this policy means today and what it may mean for the future.
Uh, thank you. Thank you both.
A quick one, well, Lori, thank you for this, and I, if, if I saw this wrong, correct me, but going through the, there are a couple of slides on revenue versus operating expense, and I tried to jot down some notes. It looked like nine out of ten years on the electric side. We had a little bit of a modest, uh, higher revenue than operating expense, and maybe all ten on water?
Yeah, uh, this, this.
Yeah.
Okay.
So perhaps an overly simple question, but if anyone in the audience is looking at this and wondering, what, what happens to that excess amount? Um, you know, is that rolled over? I saw, it looked like our cash on hand number wasn't skyrocketing, so.
And, and, uh, you know, a good portion of the ups and downs, especially on the electric side, are related to the energy rate component. So if that's a higher, um, cost per KWH, then we're going to be bringing in more revenue. Um, and the timing of expenses to the revenue, um, may not be the same or whatever. You have a little bit more, um, consistency on the water side. If you want to go to the water one, you know, it, it doesn't really fluctuate as much. Um, I would say some of the waters, um, maybe some of the expenses is related to, um, as they, as they bring on some, um, supply loan debt, and that debt, uh, is beginning to be paid off and everything, so, um, but the, the bigger fluctuation on the electric side is more related to the fuel and purchase power cost.
Is, is the, I don't know, for lack of a better term, excess revenue, is that swept into any other fund? Is that rolled forward each year?
So when we prepare our budget, we have our revenues and we have our operating expenses, and then we have our capital plan. So, you know, that revenue that we're generating that we're not using in the O and M funds our capital plan, and then, you know, the positives from that is what we, uh, put into cash.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I don't think, I think that's it.
Okay. Would ask for approval if I could.
We have a motion to accept the, uh, financial.
Uh, so moved, Rose.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the financials for November of twenty twenty-three. Let's have a roll call, please.
Roll call. Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Next on the agenda, I'll ask Jerry to come up, uh. And if you remember back in October, I did come back to the board to say that, uh, county administrator and I had, uh, come up with an agreement on how we're going to move forward with bill separation. Uh, we both had year-end stuff to clear out, and, uh, the teams are working on that. Uh, we're meeting weekly on it. So I think it's only right that I come back and give you guys monthly updates as to where we are and then how we're making our way, uh, our way through this, uh. Uh, and then any questions you have, certainly feel free to, to ask us. Jerry?
Thank you, Bill. Uh, it takes a team, so this presentation's going to cover a number of slides. If you look at the agenda here, I'm going to go over what the objectives are of the project, give you some insight about who's involved. That's number two, the senior leadership team and the organization from the UG and for the BPU, since it's a combined effort. Where we describe the high-level concept of how this is going to work. We're going to talk about the major processes that are involved. There's just a few. It's a high-level presentation, doesn't get into all the technical details. We're going to talk about the decisions made by the GUG already, a little bit about next steps, and then I'll entertain any questions. It could be an interesting presentation. I'll start off with, uh, as with all projects with IT and people, you, uh, go through a four stages. You form, then you norm around, uh, storm, and then you norm and you perform. So we are at the forming stage and the storming phase right now, where people are realizing the tasks ahead of us. The question of validity and the objectives and that sort of thing, so large part of this is when we formed, and we're going through the storming phase now with the UG and our own team about all the things we need to get done, then we'll norm around our common goals, common objectives, what milestones we have, and then we'll perform. So right now, we're So, right now, we're in the forming, storming stage, okay? So with this, there are four major objectives. The first one is, we're gonna create the separate BPU and UG billing statements, so that customers can pay BPU and the Unified Government separately for the services that are rendered. We're also gonna do, number two, create a communications plan to inform the public on what to expect and when. Three is, we're gonna refocus our BPU efforts on supporting customer needs for BPU services. And fourth, and probably very important for the UG, is we're gonna assist them with the transition needed on their end, since we are the ones who've been working with the billing statements, the reconciliations, all the accounting and all the system. So, they need our help, and we're gonna gladly provide that, okay? Let's move on to the senior leadership team, there's a lot of people involved in this. On the left are the people and their roles. So, a lot of key people from Unified Government are involved in this. On the right is the BPU, so championed by the sponsor is Bill. The CIO, I've got a lot of the technical tasks get done. Lori, David Melhoff in Communications, Janetta's Customer Service, with all the processes involved. Angela's helping us out with any ordinance changes. Rick, presented this similar presentation last week to the UG, he's our project manager. His boss is Robert Camp, who's not here this evening. And then Dustin's our director for IT applications. A lot of people involved, this is the senior level team. Let's go over, in a high level, the concept of what is involved with this project. On the left, the premise here is we're gonna use one billing system to make it easy. It's our Kianta system, that's Customer Information System, the CIS system, one billing system. Second, we're gonna have one bill print vendor, ours. InfoSend is the vendor's name, so we currently have Kianta and we have InfoSend. The premise also is the same bank, UMB Bank. That involves, number four, one accounts receivable system that reconciles between the files and people who make payments to the UG and make payments to us. So, with one through four here, the corresponding arrow to the right is one billing system. But on the right, we're gonna have two customer billing accounts, one for us and one for them in the billing system. So, the computer is gonna recognize that customer now has two accounts, UG and BPU. We're gonna create two billing statements from InfoSend, one to the UG customer and one to BPU. That'll involve two remittance processes, the payments to the accounts. One to the BPU account for the customer and one for the UG. We're gonna have two non-payment processes and disconnections and liens, disconnections for us, that'll remain the same. And however the UG wants to handle their uncollectibles accounts, it's up to them. The go-live plan date in this forming, storming, norming, and performing four stages here is April the first. Not to be confused with April Fool's Day.
Hey, Jerry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the two remittance payment accounts in that process, is there a target to, to have those due dates different during the month? On its cycles and UG's on its cycles?
Well, that's up to the UG to decide, we're gonna continue on with our billing cycles, like 2021 billing cycles we have in a month. UG's gotta decide whether they do once a month, they do it once a quarter, once a year. That's one of the requirements that we have, that we need to get that information from them so we can configure our systems. We don't have the answer to that question.
So, Jerry, let me say that, Rose, that was strongly recommended by BPU, by me, to the, to the UG to consider that, you know, it's really, it's their decision. But when you look at all the other communities and the counties and cities in the metro, that's exactly what they do. They have a, certainly a different schedule for how they're billing and how they're collecting compared to their local, that local utility. You know, local utilities does not carry all those charges on their bill, no matter where you go. If you go to the investor own, you don't find these charges on their bills. If you go to all the different water utilities, you don't see all these city and county charges on their bills, okay? So, so I have strongly asked them to consider that, I've asked them to talk to Kansas City, Missouri, talk to Independence, talk to Overland Park, to see what they can learn from how they are not only billing, but how they're collecting and how they're dealing with non-pay. So, it's up to them to make that final determination.
Thank you.
And I'd strongly advise the public who's paying attention to this meeting to have that same discussion with the Unified Government.
Alright, so, this is the text base.
Twenty-one billing cycles, did you say? We have twenty-one billing cycles?
Five days a week, four weeks in a day, for twenty-one, twenty-two days, so I think that's the number of cycles in a month. Bill cycle one is one day, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
A billing cycle is, is just a geographic area that we, that we build those certain customers. And we split that out over the whole month, so there's billing cycle one, two, three, four, five, six, all the way up to twenty, twenty-one. Right, so.
Okay, I thought it was, I vaguely thought it was once a month, you know?
No, every, every customer here in various geographical areas, when they had meter readers that walked, walked the beat, they would walk to the houses. They're usually in a geographical area.
Okay, oh, I see, alright.
Loosely follows that, but, so all the customers in building cycle one will get theirs on that, so many days after it was read.
Jerry?
Yes.
So, on the, on the last point where there's two non-payment processes, we're just worrying about ours and not worrying about the UG's.
Exactly, we're only worried about our bills, our payments and our non-collections for us.
Okay.
And the UG will handle theirs and receive the money. The next slide I'll actually show a schematic, this is for the text-based folks here, one through four.
On that, though, has there been some discussion about enforcement, I guess? Because heretofore, we've been currently the enforcer for non-payment of the UG part of the bill. So, have, have we gotten that far in the discussions for?
Following liens against the realist, against the property if they don't pay the UG for.
It would most likely be limited actions, since you have, different, sometimes you have a tenant and not the owner of the real estate. So, it would most likely be a limited actions collection.
Good, cool, thank you.
We know our processes, we're gonna follow the current one, make it very simple, we're gonna follow what we do now in accordance with the policies of the boards done. The UG has yet to come up with some, with that, so they're grasping, grappling with that now, how they're gonna do it, how they're gonna handle it.
Thank you.
Okay, I wanna go over a schematic now, where exactly this process here, I'm gonna show a visual of what it's gonna look like. I'm gonna start on the top left where it says start. Okay, it starts every day, every bill cycle, but any one bill cycle will have the following. So, Kianta is, does the bill calculations, once you read the meter, it does the bill calculation for water and electric. It then moves to number two in the previous slide, InfoSend. They're gonna generate two bills, on the top is the stream for BPU. And in the red area is a stream for UG. Let's go over with BPU. The bill is generated and mailed out or electronically mailed to the customer. It looks like the bill is, we know it now, it's not gonna change. And we have either a mail-in or ACH or kiosk, all the different ways in which we can have customers pay is here. And it, that information goes over to the UMB Bank, just as it does now, nothing changes on the blue area. It's all the same.
Other, other than the UG charges drop off.
Yes, the UG's will drop off, okay, so this is just for the electric and water and perhaps the pilot, okay?
Perhaps the pilot?
Well, so, we're, we're at a position now that we're leaving the pilot on the bill, because there's a tax against, it's a charge against BPU revenue, that's what I'm being told, okay, and I think there are some legal things that, that we can probably get into around that, so.
We, we heard that from the UG.
UG.
Dave.
County Administrator.
County Administrator, thank you. That the pilot is not going away, he said that in, in his announcement to, to us. Pilot's not going anywhere, and so that was something that I, that I explained to him that that was something that we were looking to see happen. And so, that was the first thing that I shared with others, that unfortunately, from the city administrator, the pilot is not going away.
Not going away off our bill.
So, when you, when you look at other municipal utility bills, well, when you look at other utility bills, there's a franchise fee charged for investors, other municipals, you'll have a pilot. But this, this board knows our Unified Government charges twice what the national average is, so if the UG can figure out how to get that back down to a normal amount that they charge, and that will lessen the impact. But, but normally, you do see pilot and all the taxes stay on the utility bill. It's just a lower burden that's placed on the community compared to what you see here in Wyandotte County.
Then why don't we just pay a 5% franchise fee and call it good?
So, you've seen the presentation I had with?
I, I have, one from July.
And I, and my position is, BPU should, should pay all the, everything it owes to the city and county government, but the city and county government should pay everything it, it owes to BPU. We'd still.
Mister, Mister Groneman, Mister President, I, I suggest that we get another joint meeting between the, the electeds of the BPU and the Unified Government post-haste, sir. Required.
We can, we can certainly work on that.
So, IT will develop the requirements and then plan and configure the systems to go either way.
Our IT?
Our, our, our IT does this.
Okay.
Our, our IT.
Are we keeping track of our in-kind services that we're providing to this project as well? I, I mean, I hate to belabor this, but my goodness.
It's our system with, with the Kianta.
We have the contract with Kianta, we, we have licenses with Kianta, we have the contract licenses with InfoSend, is that right? BPU does?
Yes.
Okay, and so, the Unified Government is now going to piggyback off of those BPU resources in, in addition to BPU IT resources to make this happen and still have the pilot go on the BPU bill, is that where we're at? I hate to, I don't mean to cut your presentation short, Jerry.
Okay, so, the, the plan, back in October, I spoke to, was the, was the UG now has to contract with the same vendors and have a contract with Kianta for whatever they're using there and for InfoSend and for any of the, like, paymenters, the credit card collecting company, everything else. So, so, and we've already had that conversation with them, so, we need to turn over all that information, they need to contract quickly and get that going, so that, so that once we split, you know, and if they're gonna use the same resources, or if they're gonna go in a different direction, we need to identify that quickly so that, so that we can get all that in place. On the back end of all of that, once we identify exactly where we are and everybody sells on that, then there is gonna have to be a ordinance change, charter ordinance change to make sure that it reflects and shows what the process is going forward, so.
And remember when we discussed a memorandum of understanding in place between the Unified Government and the BPU, a written MOU?
Yes.
Right, and, and I'm certain that you guys have tried it, I'm just curious as to, is the Unified Government not?
We haven't tried it here, I've, I've tried it in the past, we do have a couple of written MOUs in place. It haven't been easy to get everything else in place for this project. I have received a memo from the Unified Government as to here's what they would like to see. I'm sending a memo back to them to say, no, here was the original plan, and here's what, what we're trying to, trying to bill, okay? And, but I wanna make sure that that speaks to all of the latest things that we are, already have agreed to and, and what they have recently agreed to now. There's other things that we still need to come to terms with.
And I guess, you know, what I'm fearful of is that, you know, the, the agreements that are being made that are not captured in a written memorandum of understanding between the organizations don't, don't bear a lot of weight, so, and, and I know you know that, I just.
Yeah, and, and that's why I'm purposely trying to capture everything in the memos and the information that I send back to the UG to say, here's our understanding and here's where we are, without losing sight on, people can forget things down the road, okay, or, or people can have a different interpretation later of what we agree on today, so. Yes, I want all that in writing, okay, and that's how I'm moving forward. So, would it be a memo, would, would it be an MOU, so to speak? I don't know if we'll get there, I'll certainly have that conversation with the county administrator, there's an ordinance, but I will have documentation written, all of our meetings are recorded, we're doing teams meeting, all of that information is recorded, so we do, we do have all of, all of that already.
Alright.
Excuse me, in addition to what Rose stated earlier about a meeting post-haste with the Unified Government and this board, we were of the understanding that since the last meeting, that there would be a scheduled time that we would meet on a regular basis, and I think that should be in place as well.
Okay, I'll work with the president and, and we'll try to set that up.
Thank you.
Well, it's, just to go over this here on the left again. The meters is like our cash register, so any electric and water consumption is calculated in the Kianta system. The UG's gotta know how much water is used so that the billing system can track and charge for wastewater, since they're very, they're exactly correlated, more water use, the more wastewater you, charges you get. So, on the top, we take off the UG charges, and so the rest of the bill stays the same. The one page we have, it's gonna look the same, the bill remittance is the same, the bank is the same, the bank account is the same. And the bank then sends through electronic data interchange, information back to Kianta that says who paid what from UMB, and the cycle continues. For the UG, their customers will get a separate billing statement just for their charges. They'll make payments, this has yet to be worked out and how they make payments, because they don't have a few things yet in place, like ACH and a few things that they, they need to get in place. So, there's a little bit of work here with their Treasury Department with how payments are made. But the rest of it stays the same. Simple process is, again, one billing system, one bill print vendor, two statements, two separate payments, different accounts, the UMB sends the information over to us, and we credit back into the account. That cycle happens every day, kind of a simple process, again, one billing system, one bill print vendor, two statements, two remittances.
And, and Jerry, what, do you know what system powers the MyYCO app?
I do not.
Okay, so we've not looked for any type of API functionality, maybe between these systems and that system? Because they got ACH through there, I know they do, I use it.
But, but, well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure what they have exactly, we're still working those issues. We're going through discovery now with the UG, okay?
So, if a person pays by check, they're gonna, they're gonna remit two checks.
Yes.
If it's deducted from my bank account, it's gonna be twice, once for BPU, once for UG.
Right, you see a little envelope here, it signifies that they, they mail in a check or they make a payment online, okay? Alright, this is the plan as we have, still, you should go through discovery?
It's no different than what everybody else that lives in. It's no different than what everybody else that lives in the metro do, okay? They receive their electric and water utility bills from those companies. All the other charges come from their either their city or their county governments, and then they remit their payments back to those cities and counties through whatever pay process they have they have established.
Let's move on to the next slide. So we've had a few meetings now, I think. Two meetings, one was earlier today, one was last week with the U G with a lot of their folks on the call. Earlier, we sent some questions over there. We need to have these addressed. Do they have a transfer protocol for these files? They do. That that's solved. That answers some one of our questions. Do they have a process for accepting A C H payments? Their answer to us, no, but they're exploring that option. Do they have customer service reps ready for this now? No, they need to hire a small team to be able to answer questions, which they do now. When they call our call center, if it's questions about the pilot or about any of the stormwater or wastewater or garbage collection, we refer them over to them. So they just need to beef up that because they may get more calls now directly. On four, do they have a communications plan yet? We're working on it. So are they? Okay. So if we're working with David Milhoff and Crystal over there at the U G's to help with communications plan, how this is going to work, when it's going to happen, whether the pilot's on there or not, okay? Still open, the questions you asked earlier, what is the U G billing duration cycle? They need to address that because we need to configure the systems in response to what their answers are. When is the mailing date? That's another question needs answered. Hopefully, we gave them till next Wednesday. We only have ten weeks to go. We've already been doing this for ten weeks, so we still have questions that unless we get the answers, the project will be delayed. Number three, will they allow payment arrangements? We have payment arrangements. I would assume that they want to have payment arrangements for people who are behind in the bills, like we provide. What remedies are available to the U G to collect past due amounts? They're working on that. Ours will remain the same. What is their write-off and collections process? They've got to determine that. How are payments going to be collected and accepted by the U G? They've got to work on that. But U N B is the bank that takes the money through mail. Through online payments, in person. Any insights? We asked them from Johnson County or other municipalities, benchmark with them, figure out how they do their processes. Answers questions one through six above. They're working on that as well. These are the questions from previous meetings, two weeks ago, last week, and this week. We still need the answers to those. There's other things that we're working on as well. We're we're working through this on the, right now we're storming through this. Yes.
Sorry, appreciate taking a minute to answer my question. You mentioned that if if we don't get answers, then obviously, you know, that delays the process. Is there any incentive for the U G to answer these questions in a timely manner and continue the process as was originally, you know, scheduled or intended?
Well, we're meeting, we're meeting the prescribed meetings now. Bill is on all of these calls and driving change.
And and I appreciate that. I I think I I ask that as much as anything, if anyone's, you know, sitting in the audience or listening online that their incentive to move along with this process is if their constituents want them to. So we we may be doing what we can to push that process along, but ultimately, you know, that's where the accountability is for them to show up in good faith and move through that with you all.
The two leaders, the city administrator and our general manager are driving this change, okay? And we're taking our cues from Bill, the tempo, the pace, the direction.
Thank you.
Good.
And I appreciate that, that that the date that you gave, that you provided. You know, I I like to 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 look for a time when this is when this is implemented.
Well, you know, I've been here a few years now. We drive for a date. We may miss it, but it's not for lack of trying. And Bill said, show me why it can't happen. So we still have to get the answer to these questions to do the configuration. Because in I T, we plan the work. We design it so that we then build the code for it. We then have to test it, then we have to train it and actually deploy it all in the next ten weeks. So it's dicey here. If we don't get the answers to the questions, we can't configure it. So everything behind it gets delayed. So we're driving towards it, making them aware and collaborating where we can. So we've already got a cadence set up for the major of the teams. The senior leadership meeting. We have a meeting for the working group and the P M's meet. They have a P M, we've got a P M. Alright, so here's this change processes. On the management, we know there can be management reports that they're going to want. We're going to need to create the reports since it's our systems. And the U G needs to verify it. Creation of billing accounts for U G with the Kianta, so we're going to create those. Kianta's going to do that. We're going to create the counts in Kianta. Remember, there are some stormwater accounts that don't are not electric and water customers. So there's a lot of details we're working on. We're going to create new billing files. All it's going to, that means is we're going to have a file for the U G accounts and a file for the B P U accounts. Two files go to the bill print vendor and they just like clockwork mail the two bills out, whatever dates we said we we set for them. The accounts receivable and general ledger, we're going to create those and the U G is going to verify it. Bill envelope design. We have our own bill. We have our own bill envelope. We ask them to say, what's your new bill statement going to look like? What's your new envelope going to look like? So we can advise. Make a simple design for them. We don't want it looking like ours to get confusing customers. So they've got to coordinate that and design it. Remittance process, the U G and the U U N B bank is similar to our existing process. That's what we expect. And going back to an earlier question, the previous page, we wanted to determine the billing duration, the mailing date, the due date, collections plans for missed late payments. Ours are going to remain the same. They needed to find that. Just need to get to a real room, discover what the issues are and then decide.
So let me add this in, Jerry, too. So I know that this change, these changes are driving a lot of thought over there. The one thing I keep going back to is here's the process that's currently working now. Certainly, we all we want to see a change, but here's the process that's currently working. We can separate the U G can continue on with with the process beyond our billing system without having to change too much in order in order to get this project completed, okay? If you want to work on process changes after that point, feel free to do that. Okay, but you know, let's not introduce too much conversation now that's going to delay and push this thing out any farther than necessary because we're talking about just separating, we're talking about using all the same vendors. That can that could easily get done. The U G could take their bill design today and say, okay, we're going to keep this and we'll work on a future bill design later. U G U G can say, you know, you want to change this other process later. That can be done throughout the rest of the year, you know, and like I'm I'm reminding them of that. This is an easy, quick way of getting this through. Here's a phase one approach. They can work on their phase two approach.
Bill advised me earlier on, gave me direction, keep it as simple as possible. One billing statement, one billing bill system, one computer system, one bill print vendor. And it just two separate statements. And that's how we designed it to make it easy as possible for the U G. And again, the computer doesn't care mailing out one or mailing out two, it's it's.
And I I don't want to take full credit. That was the agreement that I came up with with the county administrator. So and I said, okay. We can use the one billing system. We can certainly use the other resources. Everything from that point on, based on that October agreement, was once we get past our billing system, everything else for B P U, everything else from our customers would be separated, so.
Okay. Next slide. So next steps, you know, I always shoot for a target. We gave them until two, we could go two weeks to to so that we can develop the technical requirements. We get the information to us that we needed. We need the technical requirements to give to our vendors. We need the following day, sent it over to Info Send and the U N B. We want to have a final project plan so that we can shoot for a date certain next week. We're going to gauge Kianta and Info Send on the requirements for them getting coding. They're standing by. They've attended several meetings with us. They know what's ahead of us. But they just need questions. There are a lot more detailed questions that they need, but we can get that through. We we just went through the billing upgrade project with Kianta and we just did the bill prints two years ago, so we're pretty good at this. U G, they want, these are the questions we still need from them. We're giving over to them. But again, we can make this very simple. Look, just answer the questions, yes. We want them to sign off on that requirements and then we're going to build it in accordance to what their answers are. Next, next slide. Collaboration. I described this earlier. Senior leaders are going to meet bi-weekly every Wednesday till go live. Recommend P M's meet twice a week. And then the U working group meet weekly. We're going to work through teams, visual and and the meetings online. We have smart sheets in which to manage the project and handle files when they use emails. So a lot of collaborations needed between the two groups and of course with our vendors. I think the last slide is coming up, questions. They've asked it through the the last meeting, add vendors to the drawing flow for the U G discussion. We completed that. So they have a more complicated or more detailed process flow. They wanted to know a number of transactions that took place. We've given them that to them. They want information on shut offs for non-payments, late payments. We know they're thinking about this. And they want to have all the meetings scheduled from now for go live. Other to-dos to be determined. So these are the things we're working on. I think that's the last slide. Any more questions?
You, I don't have any question. I just have a comment. From the 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 number of years that I've been on the board, I never thought I would see this day where there'd even be talking about separating the bills. We've come so far in just the last year, last six months. It's 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 amazing, and I want to thank you and your staff. We're doing, I know that we're doing everything that we possibly can at the B P U to make this happen in answer to Mister Parker's comments. The U G really has no reason to, you know, not drag their feet on this because there's no, there's no benefit for them really. It's just going to be more for them. So we just need to, we're, we need to get the the public where they're going, where the B P U's going to feel, I mean, where the U G's going to feel the pressure is from the public, from the citizens saying, we want this. And if enough people tell the U G that they want it, obviously, there's been enough that they've got them this far, but we need more people to let the U G, the U G know that this is wanted, this is needed. And to put the pressure on them to fill in all these blanks that are there and to answer these questions and let's get it done. That's all.
So in summary, the challenge with us now is that we're planning this work. We need to design all the technical issues between systems and how they work. We need to build it, to develop the code. We need to test it. Go through a few bill cycles and the testing. We need to train it. Our people with two different systems now, and then we need to actually deploy it. So plan, design, build, test, train, deploy. Number of steps ahead of us in the next ten weeks.
So Brett had a question.
Oh, thank you. It regards the the pilot and what bill it will be on. It it sounds like a couple of times it's been said as if that's still up in the air, so I want to clarify. Is that still yet to be determined or has it been determined that it'll be staying on the B P U bill?
I I have stated it's going to be on the B P U bill, Angie, if you want to.
Yes, be because of the way that the charge is, it's a payment in lieu of taxes. Tax, and it is actually charged to the B P U, not the customer. So both theoretically and legally, it has to remain with the bill because the B B P U has because the easiest way to determine how much to send over is to put it as an adder instead of embedding it in the rates. But it is not a charge on, in charge on the customer. It it flows through the B P U, so it has to remain with the bill legally.
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification.
The the issue there that I see is that is the amount of the pilot.
Exactly.
If we could get the pilot down to a reasonable amount that's nationally recognized, then that would that would alleviate a lot of the, a lot of the problems that that we see. So that's where, you know, where we need to focus.
Well, the other, the other, other part that I would add to that is it does provide a lot of transparency as to what B P U is collecting, you know, for the unified government and passing that over to them. If it was, and we were asked years ago to consider taking that off the bill, I mean, Bon Gray did a good job standing up and saying no to that. If it was part of our base rates, we'd have the highest electric bills around here, okay? And we certainly don't want to go there and 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 put this in our in our base rates and and then have to explain why our electric charges are as high as they are, so. So the transparency piece is important. It is something that we collect, lower lower reports. Our debt coverage with pilot and without pilots or everything, everything associated with that from the bill to all of our conversations. We do separate those commerce, that that discussion around the pilot. And it is not anything, it's not money that comes into B P U that makes makes it helps us continue with our operating procedures and getting certain things done for the utility. It's just simply money we collect and it's simply money we give to the unified government. They need to explain what they do with that.
Well, one thing I did make clear, we're not touching the money from the customers that go to the U G. We are out of that, we'll be out of that business. We'll only handle our money and interact with our customers for our our services. They'll handle their money. Thank you.
We we normally, Jerry, we normally get to staff, thank you, when we get to our board comments, but I just have to, you know, this was something that is, you know, Bill knows, as you all know, well, not maybe not. This was when I first came, this was the one thing that I just never imagined is 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 Tom, just that, but I I just really am so happy to see it's moving to this point. And the presentation that you brought, I am concerned about that line item of the pilot. The public relations alone for those that send us here to know that we're going to take that third of a bill, if it is, if it does go through, like you said, what's their incentive? I mean, this was, this was one of the things that and the the initial color coding of the bill that shows the U G charges now and that at least maybe the pilot, even though it remains on the B P U part, would still be color coded to say that it's still a a charge that we have. But that has gotten to this point, and I've said it before, is almost emotional for me having, that was my my lone advocacy when I first came to see it get to this point. And the presentation is just spectacular and continued Godspeed as you continue to work this out.
Let me ask for caution for a moment. We're not done. Okay, we still got a lot of work to do. There's still a lot of conversation. We still need to iron out with the U G. We'll be bringing back updated updates as we continue our ways, continue to work through this with the unified government, so. Jerry.
And Rick's our project manager for this.
But thank you, thank you for your comments and Tom, I'll follow up sometime later on. You know, what you want to entertain, what, you know, hearing from the board today, so. Next on the agenda, I know this comes up quite a bit. Andrew, if you want to step up. I think it's it's important for us also to kind of let you know kind of what we've done in in terms of state and federal grants, things we're pursue, we we've pursued, things that we've, we've already completed and then things that are still out there in the works.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Again, my name is Andrew Ferris. I'm the director of financial planning here at B P U. Just wanted to provide a brief update on on where we're at in the grant process. Just wanted to provide a brief update on, on where we're at in the grant process. It's obviously a continual process that goes on and on. There's always new ones that pop up and, and ones roll off and, and we go from there. But really, over the past few years, the B P U has been able to obtain a number of sizable grants. Uh, with higher gov really recording 2023 is the highest year on record for B P U. Um, so some of our recent grant awards that include the following things. So through the Economic Development Administration, we did receive uh, $2 million in funding. Uh, supporting the cost of transmission and distribution infrastructure to the urban outfitters warehouse facility that they built out by the Speedway. Um, through E P A Region Seven, uh, we were awarded $10 million, really supporting the replacement of aged and undersized water lines. Uh, through the Kansas Adjutant General's Department, 3.7 million uh, was awarded to support backup generation at, at our Neiman Water Facility. Uh, also through the Kansas Adjutant General Department, we did receive about 650,000. And that's really a uh, payment for some of the reimbursement of damages that we received during sustained high winds. And then through A P P A, American Public Power Association, uh, through the Department of Energy, we were, we were awarded about 415,000. For some supportive cybersecurity initiatives. Um, so that's, that's what we've been awarded here recently over the last year, year-ish. Um, and so those are all some sizable grants that we've received here recently. Um, really walking through the process just a little bit. Really each grant has very different steps, uh, whether it goes through the federal government, whether it goes through state administration, whether it be a partnership with the unified government. Each process is, is almost totally different. Um, makes it really challenging. Uh, but really the largest grants mentioned took well over a year to achieve. Um, all of the grants, but especially the largest grants, took a multitude of touch points with various groups at the state and federal level. Um, over the, those numerous months. And really, one of the big pieces is relationships matter. Um, and developing those relationships with the congressional leaders, congressional staffing, state departments, et cetera, are extremely important in keeping abreast. Of the funding opportunities as well as keeping those individuals and organizations up to date on the needs of our community and our organization. Um, so I know David Melhoff and Bill, they've been to the State House several times to talk to the different groups, K C C, K D H E, K H R C. About those funding opportunities and, and what matters to here to Yandau County and K C K. So those are very important things. Uh, and really the need to develop and showcase an easy to understand case for funding is imperative. It, all those, all those, I'll say David Haley's in, in those book. But you really have to simplify what you provide because they don't have time to read a 27-page document about why Kansas City, Kansas is so important to. Each of these funding mechanisms. So we've really done a great job. Uh, David, David Melhoff and his team have done a great job of, of pushing that. Information out to the, um, to those agencies and those individuals. Um, so really these grants as well as the future grants really do require a team approach. Um, the number of people involved really stretches throughout the organization. But again, David Melhoff has been instrumental. Steve Green and his water team. I T and E C C for the cybersecurity uh, issues, electric operations, environmental, utility services. They've all been actively working on, on grants internal to B P U as well as grants that won't ever flow through B P U. But flow to other organizations that, that we partner with and, and talk with and make sure that the, both the organization as well as the community is represented on, on those grant opportunities. Next slide, please. So we have several grants that are, are currently going through the process today uh, that we're still waiting to receive word on. Um, each of them, I, I'm highly optimistic on, but again, we got to go through that process. And each of the either state or federal departments have to decide what the best avenue is to spend those dollars that, that they're looking at spending. And so the first one here is grid resiliency. Uh, 40101D really comes from the Department of Energy. It's getting administered through the K C C here in the state. And so that's one of the projects we, we put in two projects for that, that funding mechanism. Uh, one is in the Fairfax area and one is in the downtown area. So both of those are really intended to improve the reliability metrics here in Kansas City, Kansas. And especially down here in the eastern part of Kansas City, Kansas, while continuing to drive resiliency throughout the system. And that's really what those grant dollars are intended to do is improve reliability and resiliency in those areas. And so we believe we have two projects that are well-suited to do those things. And um, again, electric operations and we, we did bring in a grant writer to help assist in this project as well. But um, we are moving forward with that and we put that project out there uh, end of the year. Next slide, please. The E ramp grant process is the emission reduction and mitigation plan. And, and this is being administered through the K D H E uh, area of the state. And, and these are E P A dollars that are coming through that process. So here in the last uh, few weeks, we did provide a uh, grant application uh, for the E ramp uh, grant. Uh, this really involves our, our project that we initiated for this is really a community solar project. Where effectively 80% of the proceeds from the value of that solar produced would be returned to low-income households through on-bill credits. So the, really the goal of that project is to lower greenhouse gas emissions locally. While also improving resiliency and adding that long-term cost mitigation to, to low-income households here in Kansas City, Kansas. Um, so it, it is one of those grants that may directly impact consumers as soon as it comes online. Many of these grants that you've seen that we've already been approved for, those aren't direct to consumer, right? They, they, they help the system, they help B P U. And in turn, obviously that reduces the, the amount of money that we need to support the system. But this project, for example, and the next project are both going to be projects that we're promoting. That will be direct to consumer uh, payments to help lower those bills of, of those consumers and those needs. Uh, next slide, please.
One, one question.
Go ahead.
The, will those be the consumers of solar only?
So, so it is a community solar project. So effectively the goal would be in this project, for example. That we, we would build a five-megawatt solar facility. So five megawatts, for example, takes up about 20 to 25 acres in space. And what would happen is each drop of power that gets produced is worth something, right? So whether we, we produce it at our plants, solar, wind, what have you. But the bulk of those facilities would be paid for through these grants or tax credits or, or those mechanisms. And so that, but the value of that solar is essentially getting sold to the marketplace and therefore it has a value. And we would take that value that was created from that solar and it would create some dollar value. And then we would take that dollar value and essentially do an on-bill credit that says, hey, I'm going to select likely if, if. The funds come in the way we, we may expect that we would likely impact 1,000 households every single year. To reduce their bill by up to 20% of, of what they're paying uh, in electric bills today. And so it's direct to consumer. That's the goal. Again, we have some low-income rebate programs today that we fund through our own mechanisms. But this would be funded through, without impacting our other customers directly. So this would be a great mechanism. And again, these solar facilities are 30-plus year facilities, right? So this, this is a project that not only is a singular benefit, it is a benefit year after year to those people in need each of those years. Not, not one year, it's every year we would look at, at, at those people. So we believe it has a lot of merit. We believe it um, works well for this project. Under this grant project, it's pretty broad in terms of what people could apply for. So a lot of communities will apply. We're a Muni and so we're, you know, directly administrative agency of the unified government. So we have some ability to do stuff like, like solar that potentially an, an evergy may not be able to do because their association with the city is not the same. And so those communities may opt for planting trees or something else like that. Um, we believe this is the best, best mechanism to both lower the greenhouse gas emissions, provide resiliency. As well as providing funding directly back to our consumers that, that need those funding.
And our demographics will help.
Our demographics will help. Uh, yes. So, so hopefully we sold the need of why our community is. And I, one of the things is that urban areas struggle with having renewable energy because we're urban, right? The more rural you are, the more land space you have, the ability to do those things. And so just by having community solar of a five-megawatt scale, yes, it's not near as big as our plants. But it does add to the resiliency here locally while also reducing just the greenhouse gas emissions that you need to do it. And then the transmission lines to, to bring that power to market, right? So generally, all of our wind is 500 miles to the southwest and therefore we have to transmit that, that power back. And so this is bringing some of that power home locally and us utilizing some of that government. I'll say unified government land property that may be, not be useful for anything else. And doing something like this on it to allow both benefits to everyone, hopefully. So. I, I feel, I love the project myself. Um, and I'm, I'm hopeful that we can get awarded through that. Um, the solar for all is again, part of the E, EPA family of grants, which the last one was as well. This one is getting, getting administered through the K H R C, the, so the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation. Um, the state is currently awaiting an award number. Uh, so it, it appears that the state is going to receive funds. We don't 100% know for certain. Uh, but they did apply for funds. They applied for, I, I believe $100 million in funding for the state. Uh, and then from there, we and the unified government would put in an application to receive a portion of those funds. And so one of the things, again, what we're trying to do is community solar. Uh, other communities may try different mechanisms of solar that are more rooftop residential solar. Um, but in my opinion, it has much smaller value mechanism per dollar spend uh, than this does. And this allows that mechanism to always hit those people in need, not the one-time person in need. Um, and then out. And so again, I'm a big proponent of this. But again, the same with the other project is we'd like to see 80% of the proceeds from this project go to low-income households. Um, every year going forward, that would reduce their bills by 20% um, from what they're paying today. And so that's a big thing going forward. Just again, a- as we, as everybody needs that power, that 20% off your bill every month going forward, it is a big deal. And so we are working really closely with the unified government staff uh, to ensure both location, same voice, all that stuff. Because a lot of these grants, you can't necessarily get through the utility. It's really a municipality type of, type of grants. And therefore, again, our relationship with the unified government can bring some of these things together that other agencies may not be able to do. So um, we're looking forward to this one as well. Next slide, please.
Could I stop you for just a second? I know you said this and I either don't remember or didn't hear it. How much land is needed for that project?
So, so the, the goal, I'll say on the solar for all is going to be, we're going to see how much money is administered to the state. And then we're going to try to get what we believe is our, our fair share. And so our fair share is probably going to be different from everybody else, what they believe. But when we look at our population base, number of need in our, our community compared to the state average and so forth. Um, we, we may differ in terms of how much we believe. But my hope or expectation would be that we could put a, a five-megawatt solar facility on some unified government property. Uh, and a five-megawatt facility would take up between 20 and 25 acres of space.
20 to 25, okay.
Yep. And so we, we can use undermined areas. We can use those things. The costs are a little bit higher. But again, those are, those are properties that you're not going to be able to use for other types of purposes, right? You can't build on those properties, those type of things. And so we, we found some property that the unified government does hold that we, we believe would be, I'll say, good for those. Um, but again, we're open to different property recommendations. So if anybody has some, this is a good piece of land. I'm more than happy to look at it because uh, the more that we can do, the better. So.
Okay, good.
Uh, another grant that we're, we're currently moving forward with is the Rural and Municipal Utility Advanced Cybersecurity Grant. Uh, this is getting administered through the A P P A or American Public Power Association. That's our trade association. And again, those funds are coming from the Department of Energy. Um, so this, this is really a very similar grant to what we achieved previously earlier in the year. Uh, and this is really just a round two. And so we are going after additional cybersecurity dollars. Um, again, we, we, we spend more and more on cybersecurity dollars every, every year. And so this just helps um, put some positions in place, bo- both on a training side as, as well as systems and software. So um, Jerry's team and, and the E C C team are, are, are going after the, this funding as well. So next slide, please. So some of the other grants that we're actively involved in, but won't ever flow directly through B P U. Um, the E E C B G, which is really energy efficiency style of grant. Um, we are working with the unified government on that. Uh, one of the avenues that they're moving forward with on that grant application is, is really bus. And fleet electrification. So they're, they're looking at moving in that direction. Um, we're also working on some clean school bus uh, grant dollars that are out there today. Um, and we're partnering with the unified government, K C K C C, as well as Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. So, so that's a big one that, you know, would be good for, I'll, I'll say the children as well as hopefully uh, the community. So we're looking at some bus electrification on that as well. Uh, the C P R G, which is really climate protection uh, group is really getting uh, administered through MARK. And so MARK is a regional organization that I'll say encompasses both Kansas City, Missouri, Kansas City, Kansas, this, this region. And so really us, the unified government and other entities are working with MARK. Uh, really on a region-wide approach to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions here, here regionally. Uh, NEVI is really a national electric vehicle infrastructure. We're also working with some current potential customers uh, regarding E V S E or uh, electric vehicle charging stations. Um, and some of those have some requirements, again, within a mile of I-70 access, 24 by seven public access, those type of things. And so we, we have some, some customers that are, are looking at those type of things to see if, if those make sense for, for those organizations. But um, we're having all those discussions. So we're always open. If, if you see things, if you hear things, if you know things. Don't ever hesitate to reach out to me and say, hey, have you looked at this? Have you heard of this? Have you talked to this? Um, I am always open. If you guys don't have my email, you're, you're welcome to get it. Uh, because I'm always open to explore. Again, there's, there's, there's a lot of grant pages out there. Grants.gov, the state of Kansas has a page, all these things. So, so we look at those things at least every week, turning through those things. I, I send stuff to water. I send stuff to other, other groups to make sure that we're all, all looking at these things. Because I don't know everything for certain and therefore it takes that village to, to get these things done and, and to see, hey, this makes sense for us. Or this doesn't make sense for us. And, and so we continue to explore those opportunities. Uh, next slide, please. And so all these, although these aren't grant opportunities, um, and the majority of the funds that we do see with grant. Are coming to the system as a whole, although I did mention several that we're trying to push directly to the consumer. I do want to point out that there are consumer programs that I want to always put this uh, top of mind out there. Because there are, are programs for consumers to take advantage of that may not be grant-grant. But are funding opportunities for those people and our community has lots of people that could qualify for these type of programs. So both the utility and hardship assistance, I know B P U funds those today. Um, agency assistance, LEAP, we're right in the middle of the LEAP application period. I urge everybody to apply for that if they even think they're remotely possible. You can apply online, through the mail, relatively simple process. Essentially, it's 150% of the federal poverty level um, to apply for that. There's, there's websites out there that says, hey, do I qualify? Quick and easy, plug in your number, those type of things. So I urge everybody to apply for that. We have plenty of need in this community. I believe last year uh, there were 30,000 applications accepted in the state of Kansas with the average individual receiving $600 in funding. So again, that, those are dollars directly to pay your, your utility bill. So those are important dollars. Uh, K W O P, E C Can, those are both weatherization style programs administered through the state of Kansas. Again, that's a 200% federal poverty level. So even more people can uh, get accepted into those programs. And that's weatherization right on your home. So lowering your bill through weatherization, those type of activities. Um, the, the unified government has expanded their rebate programs to accept more people. Uh, now it's based on the individual, not necessarily the household. The amount of dollars that are awarded have gone up. And so those, those programs are out there as well. Um, and then I do want to reiterate the homes in here are dollars which are associated with the I R A funding. Again, I keep saying first quarter of 2024, cross my fingers, first quarter 2024. These are point-of-sale rebate programs that are up to, if I recall correctly, $16,000 that you can get in point-of-sale rebate funds. Um, up to 80% area median income can receive 100% of those funding for weatherization, electrification, you know, dryers. All those things, there are dollars for that coming. I know not now, coming. And so I want to make sure that everybody in our community knows that. And it's really even up to 150% of the federal, or area median income. And it's really even up to a hundred and fifty percent of the federal, uh, area median income get up to fifty percent of those funds. So if you wanted to, I'll say, put two thousand dollars in weatherization or energy efficiency in your house and you make a hundred and twenty thousand, you're still eligible. So it is a great, it, it should be a great program that comes through that can really help a lot of people. And again, sixteen thousand dollars in point of sale rebates. The tax credits are out there today, uh, but really we're waiting for the point of sale rebate programs to come. And again, that, that has to, we got to wait for the state to, to do their part. But the whole idea is first quarter twenty twenty-four, nothing yet. So anyway, on that note, that's all I have. Any questions?
Andrew, I've, I've got a couple of questions. Um, first of all, thank you very much for the update. Um, I know I've been hammering, asking for the update, so thank you for that. Um, I, I would, if, if you could send this deck out to us, um, if the deck could make it to the board um, separate from the, the packet for the next meeting, that would be great. And is there any way you could update? Because what I was wondering as we went through this is for each individual grant, you know, that was addressed, not the ones we're just involved with, but just the grants that, that we're actually seeking, looking for the dollar amounts we're seeking for those projects. And then, um, I guess the, the dates on or about at which, you know, we, we submitted grant applications. And I know some are still sort of fluid, but that'd be helpful.
Yes, yes, absolutely. I, I could do that. And some are fluid, some are, again, waiting the, I'll say, six months for the EPA or all those things to make decisions on, on those things. And, um, there's, there's clearly waiting games and sometimes they'll come back with additional questions, all those things. But yeah, absolutely. I can put some, some of that information together.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's all I had.
Andrew, thank, thank you for that presentation. This is wonderful. Um, I'm wondering how close to, it's an unknown landscape, obviously, right? There's, there's many layers of organizations that provide these grants. But how close to capacity would you say we are in our ability to pursue every possible grant available? And, and what are our limiting factors? Is it, you know, staff time for grant writing? Is it being able to track every, you know, possible grant that's floating out there?
So, so we have, um, we have utilized grant writers on, on a couple of grant projects. The E D A one, we, that we got two million dollars on, we did on the, um, grid resiliency, we did. Um, so there's a lot of grants out there, not necessarily a lot of grants directed to utilities. So, you know, transportation's big, you know, broadband, even, even the stuff that's, I'll say, classified, if, if you look out there as electric, most of it's not electric utility related. A lot of it is, um, batteries, battery recycling, battery creation, those type of things that aren't necessarily ours. They have some interstate transmission type stuff which we, we would never venture into. Um, but really I, I would say that from a, from a bandwidth standpoint, um, it works pretty well today. I, I don't, um, I don't feel that I'm over encumbered. Some of it is, is maybe the other divisions say, hey, why does he keep bugging me? I, I can't, can't say for sure if that's the case, but those are the things about, um, I feel we do a really good job of, of tracking what's out there. And again, unified government would have an expanded view because again, municipalities have an expanded view of what, what they get. And they're, they're more, they get more of their funding through, through grant dollars anyway. But, but the number of grants available to the unified government is vastly superior to what we would. But again, the relationship between us and the unified government being what it is, it really does help. And, and working with some of those individuals at the unified government honestly has been great. Um, some, some great relationships have been formed and it's really worked great. So from my vantage point, I think we're doing really well. Um, I don't know if we're going to see an expansion of grants or a retraction of grants going forward. Uh, but at this point, I think we're in a pretty good position. Uh, I would have no problem telling Bill that, hey, we need either this role, this role, this role, if, if I felt that that was necessary. And again, we do have some people that we contract with from time to time when we do hit certain positions where we think we need additional assistance on.
Thank you.
So what, one of the concerns that I have, and, and it's, it's been there, still there is, uh, I think when you look from, look at it from a state perspective, federal, uh, the federal dollars are going down to the states. There's only going to be a set amount of money made available to Wyandotte County, okay? And the majority of that will go to the unified government as, uh, as Andrew's talked about, you know? We're out trying to make sure that we're having this conversation about, don't forget about BPU. We have needs too, and I'm having a conversation with the U G. But, you know, we, we're doing things too that we haven't done in the past by going directly to our, uh, our US senators and representatives and making those requests directly there. So what used to be called earmarks is now David, I think, congressly directed spending. So that's where we were able to get some of that. I think we'll know more. Uh, because I'm going back to meet with them and at the end of February, uh, I'll be going, David will be going. I'm taking Jeremy with me to, to meet with our, uh, our federal, federal representatives, senators on, here's our request. We're going to get those requests into them before we get to DC. And, uh, probably soon after that, we'll have a better understanding of what the appetite for the federal government is and whether they're going to continue on with that type of spending. Or will they kind of bring some of that back in and, and, uh, because it, because there's, there's been a lot of federal dollars that's flowing out through the system, okay? And, uh, and, and some states have been completely overwhelmed with the amount of money that they've, that's been allocated to them, which meant that they had to struggle to figure out what to do with all this money. Okay, so. But we are, we are going to continue to make our case either directly to Washington DC, but make our, continue to make our state, our case to this, to, uh, the state of Kansas. We're going to the departments of the states directly and making those requests. And then we're also going, uh, through the normal process as we understand the grants, uh, the grant applications that are out there, looking at what's, uh, what's available to us and then what makes sense, and then we're pursuing that through the normal process.
Long man, long line. How did we do? Um, I, I know it's pretty much the closing window, it's not closed completely, but during, um, post COVID, I know there were some federal dollars that were out there. It's about one-time monies that we hadn't really contemplated before. And it's probably a large number, but did we, were we able to just pay any particular grants that flip it on bottom line, uh, along that line from the, the ARPA and the, the federal dollars for COVID?
So, um, I, I obviously a lot of those COVID dollars were, were direct to the consumer. But we, if we look at twenty twenty-three, for example, it is by far the most money that we've ever received through grant dollars. If, if you look, uh, Open Gov or Higher Gov, I think it might be called, is you can go look at, at the history of grant dollars flowing into BPU. There's a couple blips through, through the years. But, but this last two years effectively substantially higher than, than anything we've seen. And that's really both to the dollars that are out there, but also the way that we've, I think, attacked some of these dollars. And so some, again, some of the relationships that David Melhoff and, and Bill have with different, you know, representatives. Um, and then just the dollars that we are going after at the state level that maybe we wouldn't have necessarily gone after before. Um, but yeah, it's, um, we, we are definitely going after all the dollars that we believe that we can go after. Um, and I think we have a good case on, on all the ones that we are still waiting on as well. And so I, I feel pretty confident that we will see some awards from, from those as well. Um, so I, I look forward to those, but.
We've got, we've got a couple of dates scheduled later this month, uh, in Topeka. Certainly we'll be, we'll be meeting with our local delegation, talking about some of the things Andrew's talked about, asking for that support at the state level. And I'll also be, uh, visiting with some other, uh, departments uh, within the state of Kansas for the solar for all and the other uh, things that Andrew covered earlier and making a direct request to, uh, support us on, on that application when we submit it. So.
Yeah. So, so one of the things, and just like Bill and the, the rest of you that, you know, communicate with, with people around the state and so forth is we're, we're really pushing for community solar. Most of the state will push for, I'll say, residential rooftop because of the relationship with their energy provider, right? Evergy makes up, you know, half the state of Kansas. They will not be able to do the same functions that, that we can do here. And, and we believe it's really important that community solar is the driving force in, in Wyandotte County and Kansas City, Kansas. And so us and the unified government are committed to doing that. But we also have to get KHRC to believe that's, that's a believable case. And in my argument, we support very many more households on community solar than you can on rooftop. It's a lot longer lasting program. Dollar spend, the dollars helped greatly improved on community solar. And so if you do speak to anybody at KHRC or the, or the state, uh, I'd appreciate that, that mention to them as well so that they're, because it, it is, it is one more thing that they have to say, these guys want this. Most of these people can only do this, right? So that the city of Ottawa, for example, there's nothing they can do about a community solar project. They just don't have a mechanism to do that because they're tied in with Evergy and Evergy's going to operate as Evergy operates. Um, whereas us and other municipalities, so K M E A, K P P, they represent smaller municipalities throughout the state. They'd be open to these type of ideas. Um, but again, I'm just preaching that, hey, if you guys talk to others throughout the state, I'd appreciate any word of mention that you can do because every word helps. I, I guarantee that, whether it be, you know, letters of appreciation from, from different groups. So, so David Melhoff has put those together on some of our bigger grants. People like to see that, hey, the governor supports this, the, the, the boards, the different groups support this. So, um, I want to make sure that we get that voice out there as much as we can because it is important and it is real dollars. It'll trickle on for the next thirty years, um, so meaningful dollars. So anyway, appreciate your time.
Uh, just real quick, so are we utilizing our, uh, state organizations to which we belong, right? So our K M Us and stuff like that and using their lobbying, uh, capacity to help us get this message and convince KHRC why this is, why a community solar farm would be a good fit? You know, certainly don't discount it. How about that?
Yep. Yep. So, so we do, I, I will say, I regularly speak with K M U as well as the different agency organizations, K P P, K M E A, which are organizations of municipal, smaller communities. Um, to, to make sure that we're all thinking through the same thing, make sure that we're all seeing the same things. Um, and so, yes, because they speak to K C C, they, they speak to these different organizations as well. And I want them to hear it from as many voices as, as I can. And so we do have regular conversations. And K M U has been really good about, um, providing grant updates as, as they see them as well because they, they track some of these things as well. And most of those things pertain to us as well. So.
True.
Uh, to your, to answer your question, yes, we're, we're utilizing the lobbying services with them. So.
I'm, I'm, I'm certain you are. I just, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Uh, moving on to miscellaneous, uh, miscellaneous comments.
Before we, before we, can, can I have Lori, uh, come back? I had some questions I want to a- ask her, uh, regarding, um, financials. I wanted to ask about, because the concern that I, that I had, uh, has to do with billing. I know how customers are billed. I want to know what happens to the consumption of the unified government. Do they bill us? Do they, do they, or do we bill unified government as a whole? Do we build them separately per department? How, how is that, how's that happen? Because, because we're trying to get the pilot down, and I think that would, that would help if we could learn how, how's, how is the unified government billed for their utility, their, their electricity and water usage?
Well, each of their facilities has an account, just like a customer.
Okay.
We go through the process of billing, so, you know, we track their consumption and, and the costs and everything. I mean, they don't pay us for that. So, you know, we still run it through our process in order to clear, clear our AR or whatever. So we just, we just, uh, accumulate that as part of our contributions to community, which we um, identify on a quarterly basis in our financial report.
Thank you so much, uh, because the footprint, I think, is something that we need to track and try to, to, um, lower in order to, uh, get that pilot down. I think that's one way we can probably approach it. I think it's something we, we should probably look at.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Uh, so moving on to miscellaneous, uh, we've got a few things. I'll start out with something you may already be aware of, but, uh, early this week, Leon Daggett passed away. I'm not sure if you've heard about that or not. He was a former general manager at BPU. Uh, just passing information on that I know about. I don't have any details other than what I, uh, just stated. Um, for the new board members, the two new board members, uh, we've been exchanging emails. So we're going to be moving forward on the twenty-fourth and the twenty-sixth with new board member orientation. Uh, and then we'll, uh, also use that time to kind of update you on the fact finding report that you have and things like that too, just to kind of get you up to speed for where the rest of the board is. And then, uh, moving forward, uh, Tom, we need to talk about work sessions. I know that's, we haven't had one in a while. And, uh, and for the new board members, those are meetings before this meeting normally starts at five o'clock, uh, unless there's something that may force us to start a little bit earlier, but it's normally five o'clock, uh, and then we're rolling to the regular session. And then finally, uh, last but certainly not, not least, yes, uh, congratulations to all the newly elected board members. Uh, uh, you've got our support, uh, got our help. Uh, congratulations. And, uh, Mr., I'm almost, I'm almost in, madam, Mr. President. I will turn it back over to you.
Okay. So at this time, we're at the public comments portion of the agenda. Are there any member of the public who'd like to address any of the, uh, agenda items that we had and make any comment? Uh, and if so, uh, please limit it to three minutes.
Good evening. Congratulations to the new board members. I do have a comment about the pilot.
Can we get your name and, and?
Yes, my name's Fanny and I live in Wyandotte County. And I do have a question about the pilot. I do have a comment about the pilot. Now, you said the, 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 the BPU is community owned. We're paying, we elected a board to run the BPU for us. And the unified government is running our board, dictating to our board that we elected. So we're not supposed to pay taxes if we own it, but we paying a taxes to the unified government. The pilot in lieu of taxes, we paying the unified government and they're using our free utilities. Why can't we just charge them for the utilities if we're going to pay them taxes for it? Because the public own it and the public is paying the taxes, taxes. The unified government can write grants and get money. They got plenty of money coming in. As long as the casino and the race track haven't built that hotel, they pulling seventy-five million a year out of that. Then they pulling all the money they pulling from BPU without the taxes. So why are we paying taxes to them if we own it and not supposed to pay taxes? Because you keep explaining that in lieu of taxes, well, and we paying it to BPU? For this company, the customer who's not supposed to pay? I mean, you can explain it any way you want, but that's just the way it's going. That's the way it's done. I mean, we can call it, we can name it anyway. I want to know who's governing the pilot and who gave them permission to put the pilot on the customers? Who's controlling the pilot? Who, who, who gave permission? Did we have to go to the state to the government? How do we get permission to add pilot to the wheel? Because nobody told us that we will be in tax because we weren't supposed to be taxed as BPU owners. We was not supposed to be taxed, so they didn't tell it a tax. They call it a pilot. We just discovered in the last few years that this is a tax. And then you say in lieu of tax, it's a double tax. It's a tax we paying U G. Why are we paying U G anything? Why aren't they running their own and you are running our BPU company since we supposed to own it? They're not paying us. They're using our supplies. If they're going to tax us, at least charge them for the supplies. We're not owning anything. It's, it's either that's what's happening or either you need to take over ownership and we're paying the taxes.
Thank you. Is there any other, uh, member of the public present that would like to comment on any of the agenda items that we've had this evening? Is there anybody online that has their hand raised that would like to comment? Is there anybody online that has their hand raised that would like to comment on any of the agenda items? Ty, if you can state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Ty Gorman, two eight four three Parkwood Boulevard, six six one oh four KCK. Thank you for the time and I appreciate the meeting today. Just wanted to first thank. Andrew Ferris for his presentation. I think that as I've. Been able to talk to, to him and other folks who are working on getting these grants. And working through the collaborative processes with the UG and the state government agencies, KHRC, KCC. KDHE and others who can facilitate these. There are so many opportunities and it's difficult to navigate, I think. That this, in the last year, I've been coming in and talking about this. A lot of progress has been made. The, the one way I do see some, some need for improvement is in. Customer planning. Public planning that uses some of this public money from Mark, from the UG to. To, to fund and collaborate with people at the neighborhood level to see. What works with them as far as low income assistance programs especially. And I would also say I appreciate the work that's, that's been done. That I've been following by Rose and others on the customer. Customer services and the improvements that can be done in the assistance programs. So I want to just, you know, advocate for and encourage, I'll, I'll follow up on this. But the, the, the details between the customer service and the federal grant teams to get. Ironed out so that the onus is not on the low income customer to be connecting these dots. Filling out all these separate application policies. There should be a qualify for one, qualify for all. Type of assistance program and the BPU is the best agency that exists in KCK or statewide to. To, to facilitate that and to communicate to the customer and to know who has, who's paying the biggest bills, who has the. Square footage. Okay. So the last thing I'll do is just say thank you to the last speaker and I really want to raise what she said up. The BP, the BPU giving the UG free charges is just a flat tax. And she is right. If BP can use that as a leverage for the UG. To have a more progressive tax structure, pay their bills like another customer and stop. Flat taxing the poorest customers the most for their free power and free charges. That would be the better solution. So just wanted to.
That is time.
Speaker, thank you very much.
Could you state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes. She unmuted, Rick.
Hello? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, how are you doing? My name is Dr. Rosal. I live in forty-three, forty-five North one hundred and twenty-second Street, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one oh nine. I just have a simple questions. I'm not sure if this has been asked before. I, I, I appreciate the solar power. It's, it's a great, it's, it's a great vision. But I also want to, I want to ask, how is this grant? How, how did you go about? Creating the grant? And how do you, what community did you use as a variable or comparable to our, our community? Because our community, a lot of our diverse bilingual, we have several different languages in our community. And a lot of us are not aware of what's going on with this planning. And how are we going to make sure that our communities are being treated equitable with this new plan? That's my question. Thank you.
So in all of our conversations with either the state or the federal. We are speaking directly and specifically about our community and the needs of our community. And I think we do a pretty good job with just describing. What our community is and what those needs are as we, as we pursue all of these applications, all of these grant opportunities. So. That's not lost on us. We're making sure that everybody we talk to is fully aware of. What Wyandotte County KCK is, who lives here. And more importantly, what else the need of, needs of the people that live here.
So, sorry to interrupt. My question is with, as you were saying, you're communicating with the community. To kind of understand the needs of our community. I'm still trying to understand what is your process to establish that communication? Considering we have over sixty-five languages in our community. And I know that a lot of our, our, our communities here are not aware of this.
You have thirty seconds.
And with our community BPU. Processes.
Well, what I said earlier is we're, we're talking to federal and state decision makers about our community. And letting them know exactly what the needs are here locally. I know that we have, we have an elected board. We have David Melhoff who is out in the community. I have spoken at. A few community events, talking about BPU, talking about. Here's what we're trying to do to continue to help our community, but also we're out there listening to what people obviously tell us too. So. There is, there is conversation going on. I can, we can take your. Do we get, capture her name, Haley and address? Okay. And we can, I can have. One of our staff people follow back up with you directly to talk more specifically about what we're doing. And if you have any suggestions, which certainly be welcome. Those will certainly be welcome among any of our staff and then I'll be certainly interested in what you can. What you can offer as well.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. So I guess I'm, I'm not going to ask you for any way of directly contacting you, but are you a BP account holder?
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay. So we can, we can look up your account and, and determine from there how to, how to reach out directly to you.
Be waiting. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Rick, is there anyone else?
This is a, a new process or procedure that we've taken on just recently. This is our first time. To allow, you know, public comments first and then public comments again. I think it's something that. Seeing how it progressed this evening, that we need to take and look at it and maybe fine tune it. If somebody has questions, maybe they ought to submit those questions. And then we can get the questions to the right parties. If they have, this is a comment. Portion of the agenda. If they have comments that they want to make on, you know, at the beginning on. Or on comments on agenda items. Then, you know, but not the, the, you know, get into the lengthy questions and. But that's something that we as a board, we need to discuss and decide how we want to, if we want to fine tune it, if we're fine with it the way that it is. Otherwise. We'll do, do that. Okay. Board comments, if we're. We'll start down with Ms. Rose Mulvaney Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I too would like to congratulate you, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President. And our, our newest secretary, congratulations. I, we look forward to your leadership this year and. And continuing to, to keep those sleeves rolled up. I would like to, Andrew, I, I did, I thanked you earlier, but truly. That's really, really important information. And I know that you and many others here at BPU have been working. Very diligently on this over the last year. So thank you for the update on that. Jerry. You know, God, Godspeed with this project, my friend. You know, I am hopeful. But I, I do not have on rose colored glasses with this one. So I know it's difficult. And, and I certainly appreciate Bill, your involvement with it and, and your, you know, continued. Push in this direction, you know, certainly at this board's direction. So hopefully. You know, twenty twenty-four will bring us separate bills and then this community at least for, for something. So. And I, I think, I think that's all I have this evening.
I'd just like to echo the congratulations to our newly elected board members and to thank everybody that did presentations. And thank you to people from the community that came and endured our entire meeting. We appreciate your interest in us.
Echo a lot of the comments made thus far. Thank you to staff and community members for presenting great information to us tonight. And congratulations to the new officers. Look forward to your leadership.
I did also saying regarding the election, congratulations to you, Mr. Gorman, Mr. Haley. And I'll do my best to serve. I want to express my thank you to those who made presentations. As well as to the community members who came to express their concerns. Again, we talk about removing the pilot from the bill. However. As we know, that, that, that may still, still be on it. But like I, like I spoke of earlier, I, I like to see that through as to how we. May reduce the pilot. And I think that is a concern that, that people are really looking for, as you say, to the, these levels that. Are from other municipalities because the pilot is, and is on the bills of both municipal, municipally owned utilities. So the pilot is there. So, but the, the rate that it was increased, something that we need to see. Lower in the future. Also, wanted to say that. I heard Patrick talk about the resiliency. I thank you for that being addressed because my power went out today. And I, and I really appreciate BPU because BPU's a way of, I mean, their timing of, of being able to restore power is exceptional. I really appreciate that. So. I'm grateful to be able to serve with this utility. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to initially echo, congratulations, Mr. President. I think this is your second or third time being the president here. So we look forward to the insight. That your previous administrations will bring to me a novice in that regard and certainly the others. And to thank Rose, who was our immediate past president during your tenure. For the diligence that you brought, the cohesion that you brought for some, especially community oriented during your, on your watch, we. Have now the Consumer Engagement Committee and Policy Committees. These are committees where people can interact and help us shape and form policies and, and, and have more consumer interaction. And I appreciate the diligence that you brought in bringing that. And thank you for, each of you for allowing me to serve as vice, vice president. Separate charges, the presentation on that has just made my day. It really has. It's just a phenomenon. We all have our fingers crossed and whatever else we have to do to see some of it come to fruition. I know I visited with the Garner administration, Mayor Garner, who was at the fulcrum when he got elected. Hearing as we all have heard about the pilot, these other onerous taxes that we're the bill collectors for. And so thank you, Jerry, for what you've done. And Andrew, thank you for sharing as well. For where we are aggressively pursuing various opportunities and grants. And as always, Lori, for the review on our financials, which were uplifting. Finally, I, I do want to say that I still am anxious to address some unseen policies that need to be. Talked about the cold weather rule. A night like, a week like we've had. All of us are mindful of the difference of those who would otherwise be in a very different circumstance. Were it not for this policy being implemented. I want to urge that we continue to look at other policies, including opening up of direct customer service available at the lobby. Talked about it before. Mr. President, I hope that will be an agenda item that you might consider listing. I've had several calls this week from across the diaspora of our social fabric. I mean, from business people who can't access to, you know, folk, everyday folk who, I mean. There needs to be direct human interaction in this lobby, in a lobby opened up. And I would hope that we would undertake that on one of your agenda items to see how that can happen in that two percent. That we saw that Ms. Lori Austin brought us, how we can just have that human interaction again available. Finally, also a task force on what this board makes. It's been twenty years since there's been any increase. I brought that up two years ago. Want to revisit that issue now. And look at what should be equitable. You know, we're the tip in of the tail wagging the dog. Everyone else out here is making real. And we're putting our time in and there's, there should be a task force, make it independent. So we take the politics out of it. I'd like to ask for that. And I do appreciate the public comments. Visitors that came both before and then after the presentations, whether online. We do have greater transparency now. Another thing that we did during the time that I've been here is to have these archived, these meetings archived. We now have access that didn't exist when I got here, a little post-COVID, where people can call in and participate. Don't have to physically be here. And I do appreciate those that take the time especially to come out and, and participate and share their concerns. Thank you.
Okay. So I'd just like to thank the other board members for their, their vote of confidence and support. And I look forward to serving as president this year. And should you have agenda items that are, items that you'd like placed on the agenda, feel free to contact me with those items. Myself or, or Bill or Chris. And we'll see that, that they're addressed, properly addressed. I also am excited about the two new members and I welcome them. There have, have had more input, more questions that you ask. And your enthusiasm is showing and it's needed with this board. And we, I think we'll move forward and I think it'll be great members. So thank you for your, your inputs, your, your studious questions. And don't feel free to ask, don't think that there, that there's a question that is too. You know, silly or stupid because none of them are. So again, just thank the new members. And if you have agenda items, be sure and get those to me. And we will end, in this meeting. I asked for a motion to adjourn.
I still move, Mr. President.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Brenneman.
Aye.
Haley. Wakes.
Aye.
That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.